Susan Anderson is going to put up the flag on the screen and feel free to start whenever you're ready.
Okay, thank you. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you, Kaya. That was great. So you're a student at YB Tech?
Yes, ma'am.
And don't ma'am me.
Okay.
Where is your home high school?
Eisenhower High School.
Nice. And what are you studying at YB Tech?
I am studying physical therapy technician.
Oh, we need lots of you.
Yeah.
Especially for those of us as we get older, physical therapy is sometimes automatic.
Yeah.
We have a couple other board members on with us today and I would be remiss if I didn't let them thank you and ask any questions that they might have of you. So Raymond, do you want to start?
Sure. Just wanted to say thank you Kayla for being with us today and stepping up as a leader and leading us today. We appreciate your time and I just wish you the best as you move through the Yakima School District and you go on and follow your dreams and goals. So thank you so much.
Well, thank you for giving me guys the opportunity to do this today.
Norm, are you here?
I am here. And again, Kay, I'd like to thank you as well and wish you well and all your academic and career goals and dreams and and hope you have a good year back in real school this year, so.
Thank you.
Barb, is Reverend Davis on the call yet? If we hear from him, we'll let it, we'll let him know, let him pop in when he can. Um, Kaya, what, what grade are you? Are you a junior or a senior?
I am a senior.
Oh, so we'll see you at graduation, right?
Mm hmm. Yes, ma'am.
Mm hmm. Do you have a, an idea about where you want to continue? Um, and if you want to continue in physical therapy?
Uh, I was looking at universities here in Washington that do uh the whole six-year uh physical therapy program so that I don't have to transfer. I was thinking Eastern or Whitworth. Um, and I am planning on applying for colleges or for scholarships so that it's easier for me to get into schools because I know those schools are not cheap.
No, no, but East, I have heard that Eastern has a great program.
Mm hmm.
Six years, huh?
Yes.
Oh, my gosh. Might as well be a doctor for all of that, right?
Mm hmm.
Well, Kaya, thank you so much for joining us today. Um, we really appreciate you taking time out of your afternoon and leading us in the pledge. And wish you absolutely the best of luck.
Thank you for having me.
All right. We'll see you, we'll see you at graduation.
See you then. Bye.
Bye bye.
Reverend Davis is on now. President Rice.
Oh, good. Welcome, Don.
Hello, guys. How y'all doing?
You missed a great pledge. Kaya is a student at YB Tech, but her home high school is Eisenhower.
Okay, that's good. They kept kicking me off. So, you know, technology today.
Technology being what it is, huh?
Yep.
Um, I think you are scheduled to read the land acknowledgement. Are you prepared for that?
I'm ready. I'm always ready.
Okay.
The na- the land acknowledgement. Today, the schools of the Yakima School District rest on the ancestral lands of the fourteen confederated tribes and bands of the Yakima Nation. The people of Yakima Nation inhabited more than 12 million acres across Adams, Benton, Shalane, Douglas, Franklin, Grant, Kiddecat, Kiddetas, Kiddecat in Yakima Counties. Today, we honor those native peoples who are tied to the land through history, legend, and culture. We acknowledge their descendants who live in the world today. We thank the caretakers of this land who have lived here and continue to live here since time immemorial. Uh, an acknowledgement is a simple power, powerful way to show respect and a step towards correcting the stories and practices that erase indigenous peoples' history and culture. And it also honors the truth. As a school district, we will continue to build upon our relations with the Yakima Nation.
Thank you, Don. Um, we have a pretty informative uh agenda this afternoon, so we'll just get right to it. The first item on the agenda um is a work session with reports to the board on the state balance assessment from Shelby Lockhart. Trevor, do you want to lean into this first?
Uh, yes, ma'am.
Stop it.
I, I apologize for that. I just had to, uh, honestly, I just had to, to say that to you. Um, I saw how quickly you responded when she said, yes, ma'am. I would actually pass this to Dr. Rodriguez to uh introduce Shelby as part of her team. So, Dr. Rodriguez.
Thank you. We're excited to have a teaching and learning update today with Executive Director Shelby Lockhart. As you guys know, Shelby is overseeing a lot of things for us in Yakima, including assessment. It's one of the many hats that she wears for us. And today she's going to be just reviewing with you the different types of assessments we do, the pieces that are required. So you have a, a sense of the landscape. It is different this year because of COVID. There are things that have been moved around. So she's going to give you the lay of the land. Um, and I believe also kind of demo for you where there is information on our website. And of course, share the many people um whose shoulders we stand on to make assessment happen. In our district, it takes a lot of individuals, so she'll be sure to highlight that as well. So with that, I'm going to turn it over to Shelby.
Thank you, Dr. Rodriguez. Okay.
Welcome, Shelby.
Thank you. I will be sharing my screen uh to share the slides. I, I believe you have them already, but I'll uh share here. Great, thank you. Uh, so thank you uh for inviting me to share some of this information and give an overview of our assessment uh systems and uh data practices and our people. Um, we have, as Jenny mentioned, uh, a system built that is right now being called on to stay flexible as we um get into the fall season. So I'll share a couple of those things. Uh, so big picture, we offer universal screeners which are um used to uh screen students in and see where we might need to support them or highlight some of their strengths. We have formative assessment systems that allow us to monitor growth of students. We have in- informal diagnostic systems that allow us to diagnose where students may have misconceptions or face challenges. And then we have um probably our most popular because it's usually state or federally mandated, some of our summative assessments. They're not always state and federally mandated, but these are the ones we typically know more of. So these are some of our main federal and state accountability assessments that we are implementing this year. We have the Smarter Balanced Assessment um in English Language Arts and Math. And this year, I'll share more in another slide. This year, the state has called on us, um, and well, the state has called on us to offer, offer last year's Smarter Balanced this fall. Um, so we'll go off grade level a year, offer it this fall, and then we will also do a spring. Where we are usually, we usually only give a spring assessment. So this year, several grade levels have two Smarter Balanced Assessments. We offer the WA-CAS, which is our comprehensive science assessment, our WA-Kids for kindergarten skills, our Vida, which is a screener and an annual assessment um for multilingual learners. We have the NEEP, which was just announced, who would be giving uh the NEEP. I think on Friday, we found that out, which schools will be giving that. And then we've historically and continue to give CBAs, which are classroom-based assessments developed by the state. And finally, we do uh Dibble's A and Reading Inventory based off of our state lab funding requirements. This um takes those same assessments over on the left-hand side under what? And gives you the when, the who, who takes the assessment? And why, kind of big picture, why they would take the assessment? So starting with the Smarter Balanced in the upper left, the what? You'll have the fall and spring this year. Typically, like I said, we only do a spring with this one. And then this fall, you'll see who needs to take the SBA. And this spring, who needs to take the SBA. Know that the fall SBA is a lot shorter. It's a condensed version of the SBA. And it is off-grade level, so it goes back one grade level for our students. I won't read through each and every one of these. I think you can read these. And of course, at the end, I'll answer any and all questions, or if you want to interrupt, that's fine too. This is a lot of information on one screen. But it just gives the general overview of what we offer for, for accountability assessments, when we do it, who takes it, and why we might give it. We also have an assessment calendar on our district website. So where you go to find the instructional calendar, you can see an assessment calendar right next to it. In your slides, this link is live, so you can click on that as well. And this is a calendar that um typically will stay pretty static. However, this year, we've had to adjust some things. And as we go through the fall, we may need to update as we go along. So we try to remind all of our staff if we do update it um that it's been updated. But know that this is on our public site, so anyone can see what assessments we're offering um and when we are offering those. We break it down by early learning, elementary, middle school, and high school because there's quite a bit um that we do around assessment. We can't fit it all on one page. And then here's the team, and there's actually more uh folks than this, but these are the main uh leaders of assessment in our district. Our district TOSs and Protex, I just want to give a big shout out to Carrie Backland, Rachel Dibble, and Tina. And Tina, I'm going to mess up your name because I'm just learning. We just brought Tina on and I'm not even going to say it because I'm going to mess it up, but I'm gonna, I'm gonna fix that. I apologize about that, Tina. Um, but this team has been just really working hard right now to keep our assessment system afloat and working right now um with the staffing challenges that we have at times. So um I just want to say thanks to that team. Our building assessment uh coordinators and our data specialists also are out in the field onsite at schools to help um put assessments in place. And then uh folks who are coaching alongside the assessments and supporting staff would be the IS principals. Um, and then the teachers, of course, implement them. The pairs oftentimes are helping with assessments. And our students um are taking the assessments. And also um, there's a big push right now to keep building our collective capacity around uh students as assessment partners. So we are heading into a culture of assessments being done with students and not to students. Um, so look for more uh info about that. And I hope you'll ask more questions on Into the Future about students as assessment partners. And that is it. So I am open to any and all questions about our assessment overview and systems.
Any questions from board members?
I do have a couple of questions. One is, do we anticipate any of those assessments being canceled this year or in the, in the future? Or what, what are your thoughts? Or what's, what are you hearing about that?
Yeah, right now, there's no mention of canceling. We are moving windows right now on our own um state accountability. At some of our state accountability assessments, we've been able to open the window later. Um, and it allows our staff to have more flexibility when they are administering the assessments. But I've not heard anyone say that anything's getting canceled at this time.
Okay. And then my next question is, and I'm sorry I have my camera off. I'm just, my, my internet's not too strong, but um. So I guess I'm, I'm wondering about in past years when we talked assessment, we also talked about the, I don't know what you would call it, the informal assessments that are going on at each school and classrooms and how all that uh ties into, to what you just presented. I'd like to just get like an overview of that or, or your thoughts on how we're, how we're doing that.
Yes. So I think what you might be referring to are some of the interim assessment blocks. Um, I know that was um a conversation from the past where folks were wondering um how many and when and things like that. So that's part of our formative assessment system. And when we met with teachers to build that system and get advising on it, um, we started with the concept that students are being asked to take a fall Smarter Balanced and a spring, so less is more this year. And um we encouraged them to just pace out their year wisely and not over-assess this year. So we do have some formative assessment scope and sequence um suggestions for teams depending on the grade level that is advised by teacher teams.
And I guess my last question is, and I, I have a, just something to kind of set this question up, is that I, I learned today that um at the community college level for math, um, most students are being placed at lower level math, like Math 75, which is pre-algebra, right? And most of those students are students of color, which is an equity issue. So I'm just wondering um if, if you're seeing some inequities in those, I don't know, pre-assessments, or are you anticipating that to continue? Or, or there's something that's real alarming that you might be anticipating? I guess that's a big question, but it just kind of, I'm just kind of curious on, on how that equ- equity is kind of, how you're looking at equity through these assessments, I guess, is my, my real question.
I think it's a great question. Uh, I, what I'm seeing in our uh teaming is a focus on database decision-making. So we have built a balanced assessment system or are very close to having kind of a final balanced assessment system with all those layers where we can universally screen math skills, like you're mentioning, at any grade level from K to 12 and catch, catch information early and see where our system is not s- serving students' needs. So historically, we may have leaned heavier on the summative assessment. And that's typically too late to, to question our systems or our response to students. Now we have some of those tools to do what we call early warnings and call out those assets, but also call out where our system might not be serving students how we need it to. So we're getting better at that. And yes, I do see some of those alarming disparities. And I see a lot more leaders in our district aware of those as well and able to speak about them and also problem solve around them. That's a big part of the MTSS work that we do at a district level is to bring that data to the table and talk through some of those disparities. And not just talk, but then act as well and remove barriers.
Just an interesting note here that I learned that, I mean, at YBC, you know, it's, this is an, an issue as well for math specifically. But if a student starts at Math 50, they're taking two years to, to get to college-level math, right? So the, the college has committed and developing a, a strategic plan to no matter, no matter if they're at the lowest point in math, they're going to complete their college-level math in one year or in three quarters. So, you know, I'm thinking if they can do that at the college level, maybe at school district, you know, public education, that we can maybe look at how we can accelerate that, that process and get them to the level they need to be. So just, just a no, no question. Just, just a comment. Thank you.
I appreciate it. I just want to say one more thing. I would encourage the board and all leaders to um learn more about the ninth grade success uh leaders that are developing at each high school right now. They're composed of teachers, administrators, um support staff that are meeting uh weekly to look at freshman data, behavioral and academic, and, and intervene early and really call out the systems that aren't meeting students' needs. And so this will be a really interesting place to see what, what happens with math data or any content area. Uh, but those are really um great evidence-based um teams that hope to replicate their effort at different cohorts, whether down to eighth grade or up to uh 10th grade on into multiple years. So I hope you'll reach out to those uh folks and ask them some more questions too.
Thank you, Raymond. Thank you, Shelby. The, those were great questions and responses. Um, any other questions from board members? Okay, I just, I just had one. Um, well, maybe one. With the change in putting the state assessment for, that should have happened last spring into this fall. Um, and you said that it, the time component is, is shrunk up on that a little bit. Um, I know in the spring, it's, you, they usually, staff usually carves out weeks for the state assessment. How much, how much time are we talking about to do it this fall? Do you have a sense for that?
I do. This fall, it is half of the test. One, one way we talk about the test is a um computer adaptive portion and then a performance task. In the spring, they do both. This fall, they will only do the computer adaptive, which you know, one way to think about that is like a multiple choice test almost. It's very quick. It is not a lot of performance tasks where they have to put a lot of time and energy in. So pretty quick assessment. Um, it is supposed to take a class period per content, so a lot shorter. Also, in the past, our assessments would take a lot longer because of access to laptops. Now that we're one-to-one, we can really move through these opportunities for students to show what they know very quickly.
I hadn't thought about that. That's, that's a good point to keep in mind.
Martha, I do have one more question that I got. Um, so because, you know, of course, everybody knows we're, the pandemic and the effect of it on, especially last year, right, on students in classrooms, a lot of absences and all the things, all the challenges that we face. Would it be safe to anticipate or to, to think that as a board, that the test scores overall are going to be a little lower? I, I know that uh students, you know, uh, at the national level are um one or 1.5 years behind because of the pandemic on, and remote learning. Is that something that we can anticipate with the Yakima School District test scores? And should prepare for, I guess.
The messaging and the work that we've done since last spring when we um launched our professional development around acceleration was that we were really going to narrow our focus and target um the key priority standards that students learned last year and, and the ones that they'll learn this year. And with that narrowed focus, we have a really great opportunity to accelerate learning. And it's realistic to think that our students can meet those standards this year. So by spring, we can see a lot of students meet standard. The, the critical component is that our adults really focus in on those key priorities. If we are trying to teach that broad range of um learning or standards deeply for this year, we may miss the mark a bit. So we've done a lot of professional development and co-planning with leadership teams and teachers to narrow the focus down and really get efficient at that unit planning based off those standards. So it's totally doable. We've just got to get the adults focused on those key standards.
I like the word you used, accelerated. Can you talk a little bit about that? Because we talked about, like I said, I men- I mentioned at YBC, we're trying to limit that refresher, the time they spend on refresher courses and, and get them into the higher levels of math. So what, what do you mean by accelerated? And this will be my last question, I promise.
Sounds like we need to go get some coffee. Raymond, um, so we've been talking about acceleration since last spring. And it's really about shifting our mindset from remediation or going backwards and more around understanding what a student can learn, what their brain is really capable at their developmental phase, which are the standards for their grade level. So if there's an eighth grader coming in this year and they had seventh grade and COVID remote hybrid world, their brain's ready for eighth grade standards. So we want, we want them to have learning experiences at that level. And that's really the essence of accelerating. We don't go all the way back. We may integrate some of those seventh grade standards into the eighth grade learning environment, but we don't go back and reteach all of seventh and then hope we have time for eighth grade. So we really teach to the students the, their brain and where they're at developmentally.
Thank you. I appreciate that.
Thank you, Raymond. Does, does this conversation trigger questions from other board members? Okay. Going once, going twice? All right. Thank you, Shelby. This was really informative. I know that, that board members have, have had questions about assessments in the past. And this year, it's going to be even more important that we really focus in on um the learning that our students might have missed last year because of the pandemic and every, all the other chaos that was happening in their lives. Um, and to be able to apply that focus to the learning for this year as well as catching them up from whatever they missed last year. I know it's going to be a challenge, but um I'm, I'm confident that we will see some in, we will see improvements between the fall and the spring with this increased focus that you talked about. So I appreciate that. Dr. Rodriguez, do you have any closing thoughts on this?
I just want to thank Shelby and the team that have been working really hard on this. Um, and obviously, a big thank you to our building leaders and our teachers um who are the ones really on the ground that have to implement these requirements. We are, I think, anxious to see how kids do from fall to spring um this year, just given the, given the last eighteen months. So it will be great for us to have that data so that we can really plan forward from there and how we best meet uh both our students and our staff's needs going forward.
Thank you. Dr. Green, do you have any closing thoughts?
Similar to those of Jenny, just thanking all of our teachers, our administrators. But Shelby, thank you so much for your preparation and that of your team. Thank you, Jenny, as well.
This was really helpful information and um given the year that we've had and potentially the year that's, that's ahead of us, it may, there may be value in kind of bringing this back again in, in somewhat modified um reporting as we get closer to spring assessment time. But that, that would be, you know, a subject for further discussion. Okay, thank you, Shelby, for being here.
You're welcome.
You're welcome to stay, but I know that you may have other things tugging at you, so.
I, I will sign off, but not before I shout out to Tina Gerstenberg.
Nice. Nice. Well, thank you to you and your team for everything that you did and put, pulling this information together for us. Next item on our agenda is um reports. reports from members of the board. Do we have any board members who wish to share anything out with the rest of us? I do want to make the board aware that the handbook for general assembly is now available online at the WASDA website under strategic planning, strategic, no, strategic advocacy. We will be discussing the proposals that are contained within that at, I think, the first board meeting in October. And so it's a pretty extensive document. So if you have some time between now and the first meeting in October, I would encourage you to take a look at that and be prepared with any questions or thoughts on the proposals that are contained within that. General Assembly has been moved. It was supposed to be the end of September. It's now the 29th and 30th of October, and it is virtual. So there is that. Anything else from board members? Trevor?
I just want to remind both Director Davis and Director Walker that they were present on Friday for the flag raising, if they would like to maybe share some impressions about that experience.
Thank you both for being there.
Sure, yeah, it was a really, it was a really nice moment. We had a Davis student did a very nice rendition of the National Anthem on his trumpet. And we had a number of representatives from the Yakima Warriors Association, which is the military veterans from with tribal affiliation. And they did a nice presentation of the colors. And it was, it was short, but it was just a really nice ceremony and it was nice to be a part of it.
Thank you for being there, Norm. Don, do you have any thoughts?
Yes, it was very heartfelt and emotional for me knowing that the next day we were celebrating, well, not celebrating, but remembering 9/11 and to see the American flag and the Yakima Nation flag and the State of Washington flag go up side by side at the same time. It was just just great. Very emotional. And the young man that played the National Anthem did a pretty, a real good job. And just to see the people that was out to honor the raising of the American flag and the Native, the Yakima Nation flag and the State of Washington flag. And just to see the smiles on their face through the masses was just great. I enjoyed it very much. That was my second one, and I enjoyed both of them. They did a great job there. The Native Warriors did a great job.
Thank you both for being there and representing the board. Trevor, just as an aside, I know that the Davis game was postponed because of the air quality and such on Friday. Will we be doing the flag raising at an upcoming home Davis game or not?
Wonderful question. We are reassessing when that could possibly be. I know that the next Davis game is an away game to the Seattle area. So we would be putting that off a couple of more weeks. I do feel like the Yakima Warriors have adopted us or we have adopted them. So I'm sure that they would be very pleased to come back again. It just is going to depend on the logistics of trying to put that back together. We do have under our belt, obviously, the one official flag raising at the facility. The idea certainly was to have the flag raising at each of the home games of our traditional schools that do have football teams. So I will be able to get back to you with that by next week.
Okay, thank you. I didn't mean to spring that on you without any warning. Next item on the agenda are reports from the superintendent. So it's all yours.
Wonderful, thank you. And I believe going up on the screen, we do have actually the September character word. So I would share that first with the board. It is, there it is, going up. So as you can see, the character word this month is honest or honesto, and it's worthy of praise, reputable, respectable, digno de confianza, integro, respetable. And it's a trait responsible and accountability and accountability, or in Spanish, la característica es responsabilidad y obligación personal. So this is something that we will be stressing again district-wide with our character word of the month, which does lead to the next opportunity to really be clear and honest about where we are as a district with respect to the COVID reports and updates. So if we could remove that from the screen. Barb, thank you very much. I had a conversation with Assistant Superintendent Stacy Locke today, who will be presenting, and we are very excited, if you can say excited, to share with you the kind of the brutal facts to let you know exactly what we're seeing. Over the last week, I've had several contacts across the state, both with the superintendent ranks, but also we had a very, two actually, meetings with Marty Bergerman, the chief medical officer at Yakima Valley Memorial Hospital, sharing information about the current status of the case counts in the district, but also in the city. So with that, I'll turn it over to Stacy to share with us exactly what is happening, both in the area and in our district.
Thank you very much, Superintendent Green. First off, I'd like to, and good evening, board. I'd like to start with Jewel Brumley couldn't be with us tonight, so I will take the opportunity to run through her PowerPoint with updates from Yakima County. This is as of 9/10. And as you can see, case counts are down a little bit, but still, still pretty high when you look at, and this was prior to, or right after, I should say, Labor Day coming into it. Next slide, please. And again, as we look at our 14-day rate, again, down a little bit as of 9/10. So these don't include the weekend numbers, but we're down from 11:20 to 10:36, I think that said. Seven-day rate, again, dropping a little bit from 5:96 to 4:02. Barb, and then zip code rates, you can see how they're reflecting the change as we go through. Hospitalizations has been a very hot topic, and as Trevor had talked about meeting with Marty and some of the information that he shared. And I know you've also probably seen in social media as well as Yakima Herald talking about what hospitalization rates mean for overall health service for our community and where that is at, which is a critical mass. We see as of 9/10, it did drop down to just above 60. But again, our hospitals are at critical mass. And then just give you an idea, by age as of a week ago Friday, you can see that children are becoming more hospitalized as we are opening school back up. And then the rate in the county, we're at a 36% positivity rate. Obviously, Jewel did not get the latest numbers by today, so. School-aged children as of September 7th. Next slide. School-aged data, as you can see, just a steady rise in the number of school-aged children which have come down with COVID. Percentages unvaccinated versus vaccinated are still about the same and looks like still about the same as of 9/8. Still encouraging people to become fully vaccinated. And give you an idea by state and by Yakima County of percentage of fully vaccinated by age. And then Jewel's forecast into the, she has it up through the fifth, and then her projections of the upper error limit as of the end of this week into this weekend, what we're going to be looking at. Doesn't, the trend continues to rise slightly. So what does that look like in the Yakima School District? Well, when we look at, just go to that first slide, please, Barb. Let me talk a little bit about investigations. Since 8/19, which is less than a month, the end of this week or weekend will be, Sunday would be 9/19, we have conducted 714 investigations on COVID-related issues in the last three weeks. And that has ended up in over 197 positive cases. And we're now delineating this by on-campus versus off-campus. And one of the, one of the things that we really try to stress and be very cognizant of is catching people before they come on campus. And so when you look at these off-campus numbers, those are people that never had an opportunity to come on our campus and possibly spread COVID to other members, other students or employees in the Yakima School District. And so we do pride ourselves on that work. You can see staff versus students, students definitely. And of course, obviously, with vaccination for staff versus students, you can see the overwhelming number of students that are coming down with COVID. And the number of quarantines after that just keep going on and on. To date, we've had to close a couple of self-contained classrooms with the assistance of the Yakima Health District and approval of the Yakima Health District for a day or so. Also, an E-CAP classroom for a couple of days. And again, trying to have enough students, we had approximately, we've asked the Health District for assistance on absenteeism. For example, if we have between 20 and 30% absenteeism in a school, at what point do you actually close a school site down? Understanding that with like flu epidemics, there's a certain percentage at which the Health Department may recommend that closure. In this pandemic, they haven't come up with a percentage yet, but we're trying to keep a close eye on how many students are out of school and how many are quarantined as a result of that. Next slide, please, Barb. So again, we have a lot of pending cases, as you can see here, and then that becomes part of the investigations that have taken place. Next slide, please. So we are reaching out and providing COVID testing opportunities. So Everly Well has been with us since the beginning of the year, and it's an at-home test kit, and it's available to all staff members and their families. It's a pickup kit that they take home and test and then mail it in. We also, from the premier PMG, the premier medical group, have BD Veriter. And they come onsite, they're providing the support onsite weekly to all staff and students in Yakima School District. And Jessica sent out a memo information, as well as on our website, about how to register for that test so that, and what day and time on each school site it is available. So we had principals pick that time and what worked best with their staff and their schedule. And then that's what's being advertised to the parents. Parents, if you are under 18, you cannot register for that test. And so parents would register their students to receive that test. All said, we're also looking at a way to contact trace, which takes it a little bit away from our nurses since they are just working night and day trying to keep track of everything and what's going on. So we're working towards providing them additional support through contact tracing in an effort to be able to continue to provide top-of-the-line services to all our students. Questions from the board?
Questions from board members?
I do have, oh, go ahead, Norm.
Yeah, I have one question, and it may be a question that's better suited to executive session because it's general personnel related. But this question occurred to me when I was listening to what was going on at the recent WASDA Thursday webinar. The question is, what are we going to do about staff who are not vaccinated by the state deadline? Have we had a message out to staff yet and what potential consequences will be? Or how are we going to handle that? Again, that may not be a question you can answer right now. But it's certainly in my mind what our approach is going to be, because we know this being Yakima, there will be people that would choose not to be vaccinated and will may put their employment at risk.
So, Norm, I'm comfortable answering the first part of that in that we have sent information out, well, I think around the 23rd, 20, maybe it was a little later, 26th of August, to all staff about how to upload your verification based on state guidelines of vaccination. And for those that chose to select a religious exemption or a medical exemption, we have had that information out for a while as to how they apply for one or the other and/or upload a vaccination and by what dates those items needed to be taken care of.
Sure.
The rest of that, I would have to defer back to Superintendent Green as Human Resources Department has been picking it up from there.
I would take Director Walker up on his offer to maybe have that conversation at a later date, so we can get that information together for you, Director Walker, and the rest of the board, and perhaps next week, we could have an executive session.
Sure.
Okay, thank you, Raymond.
Yes, I'm just wondering about the air quality, if that's a variable or factor in the numbers, because, you know, when the, when air quality is unhealthy, we're keeping kids indoors. And so, and some of our schools are very small, right? We don't have the spacing for the room for kids to be in one area and play or do recess. I'm just wondering about that. And then also, just if there's any staffing issues in terms of staff taking, not personally, but sick leave? Maybe they have to go into quarantine? Are we seeing any issues or upcoming issues with staffing? This is my second question.
So to answer your first question, undoubtedly, the amount of smoke that we've had in our valley can impact health. I can share with you, however, that the symptoms we were seeing from the smoke, when students were tested, they came back positive for COVID. So it was very difficult to disaggregate, you know, whether it was a symptom related to smoke and/or COVID. And we did find that quite a few of them that we thought might just be related to the smoke or indeed COVID. The second part of that question, I think, could be answered next week with the executive session and going a little bit deeper into what that's going to look like.
And what about, as I also mentioned, keeping kids in school indoors? Is that posing any problems? Especially with some of the smaller schools? You know, schools that have less space, like smaller gyms or whatever for recesses and so forth?
Well, granted, it's not optimal, but the level of air quality, there's no way we could let students outside. So I think they've weathered that storm. It looks pretty clear today. I know it was clear this morning. So I know they got outside for some recess today.
Thank you.
Other questions from board members? Stacy, I do have one. I know prior to school starting, we had a number of vaccination clinics. And I'm wondering if that effort is continuing, particularly for events where more events where more community might be there, for instance, home football games and such.
Yes, Jackie Fulensby, our, our nurse on special assignment is still working with clinics to set up vaccination sites. So it's work in progress. They, they've had some trouble just by the virtue of how many people want vaccine clinics at their areas. So they haven't been as readily, readily available as they were prior to school starting where we had them all registered for open houses. So, but we're still working to, to put vaccine clinics out.
And, and as those clinics, I guess, come online, so to speak, is that information being communicated to parents through the website or in some other manner?
Yes, yes, we work with Kirsten to communicate that out through the website via Parent Square and, and other media avenues. We're, we continue to reach out. The availability is just limited due to the resources that we have.
Yeah. Well, I understand that everybody and their brother wants a vaccine clinic where they can get easy access to one. So.
Yes.
If there are no other questions from board members?
I, I do have one quick question regarding the at-home test kits. Are those like the quick test kits or do they have to be sent somewhere? Or, or can they get a reading of results that immediately or after they take the, complete the test?
So the Everly Well is an oral swab test that does need to be sent off. The other one is a rapid antigen test. They have both rapid antigen, so students could get test results onsite within fifteen minutes as well as the PCR test.
Are we, are we looking at having the home test kits be the, the rapid? I don't know what you call, what the term for that is.
Rapid antigen.
Yeah.
At this point, Everly Well doesn't offer those kits and so therefore they are the take home. But the turnaround has been within twenty-four to forty-eight hours. We've received pretty rapid turnaround. The other thing one needs to realize is, is any test is better than no test. But there are a lot of false negatives with the rapid antigen test. So we really encourage people to use the PCR test.
And what I understand, it could take up to three days to, to test positive, right? Even after, like you said, one or two negative test results.
Right, that's why when somebody is a close contact, we wait five days for them to get tested. Because then it allows, unfortunately, allows the virus to build up in the system so that you get a better test result.
To build up or not to build up, right?
Yeah.
Thank you.
You're welcome.
Other questions for Stacy? Thank you Stacy, I know that you and your team have just been burning the candle at both ends.
I work with amazing people Director Rice and a shout out to the each and every one of them.
Well, please thank them for us. I know that they probably don't have time to even take a breath right now for all that's being piled on them. And, and let them know that we very much appreciate all their efforts.
I most, I most certainly will. If I could add one more thing is the community testing that's available, it is actually taking them four to five days to get their test results back. So the home tests that we're doing, like I said, is twenty-four hours, forty-eight at the latest. So we are able to get the job done in a quicker timeframe.
It's surprising that the community testing is taking that long, I guess.
Yeah.
Okay, thank you Stacy.
You're welcome.
Trevor?
Yeah, thank you, uh, thank you Stacy very much for that update. And President Rice, thank you for speaking on behalf of the board and acknowledging all of the people that work with Stacy as part of that team. I know that the words, your words, the words of the board carry a lot of weight. And then Stacy talking about the exceptionally awesome people that she works with outside of this, this meeting. They are truly the, the champions and heroes of, of, of our district at this point. And as much as we can imagine what they're going through, that's all we can do. Because they are truly facing some things that people in this meeting haven't, we don't have an idea how difficult that is. So I had the opportunity to speak with a couple of people closest to those decisions. And there's a high level of stress, not only across our system, especially with those that are making decisions that they never anticipated, anticipated making at this point. So again, thank you for that acknowledgement. I would also call to the attention of the board that in our meeting last week with Chief Medical Officer, Dr. Bergerman, he did share in talking about where we're at as a, as a city with regard to medical care. He referenced Northern Idaho in being in a crisis triage medical mode. And there are three standards of care, green, yellow and red. Green being conventional, which is business as usual. Yellow is contingency where everyone gets cared for, but staff and supply are not conventional. And then what we're seeing in Northern Idaho, which is the triage medicine. And Dr. Bergerman was sharing that we are not too far away from the crisis medical approach here in, in Yakima. And also mentioned, I believe when we spoke, it was Thursday, when he was speaking to the superintendents, he had mentioned that there were five deaths the night before and that the, the morgue was, was, was full. So there is more of a, of a need to understand what is happening in our area than is currently being shared out there. I think in the, in the mainstream media. As part of our approach, I will be on video here the next week. We've invited Dr. Bruggerman to come in and take part in a joint conversation that will then be shared district-wide with staff and parents and community. As, as more information we can get out, I believe the better in this situation. So again, Stacy, thank you for that information this evening. And I will now thank a couple of our visitors. First, we have with us, you may have seen that Artemio Rodriguez Jr. or Art, as we call him, from our transportation department is with us. So if we could see you for a second, there he is, thank you Art. We do have a letter to share and acknowledge the great work that is happening in, under Stacy's leadership, but more directly under Art's leadership. As you can see, this is a notification from the Office of Superintendent Public Instruction. This states, after reviewing the results of the recent Washington State Patrol annual inspection, we are being recognized again as completing the inspection of school buses with exceptional results. For the past two years, the results in our district have been outstanding. Mr. Reichdahl, Superintendent Reichdahl states, we congratulate you, your administration and your staff of your transportation department for these outstanding school bus inspection results. We look forward to your continued support of student transportation safety. Thank you Barb, if you would please remove. I simply wanted, yes, wonderful celebration Art. If you would just maybe Art, say a few words. We know that you are under tremendous pressure as well to reroute buses to make sure that we are getting people to where they need to be. And when people don't show up, when we have issues where some of our drivers are unable to be there, you turn things on a dime. But aside from all of that, to have the inspections come off again in the way that they're being acknowledged is greatly appreciated by the board. If you'd say a few words, Art.
Well, thanks everyone for recognizing their, my shops or the shops, Yakima Police Shop and driver's effort in getting our buses passed inspection. So thank you guys. It is, it is a feat in the summertime to pass that, that yearly inspection. You have to inspect every single bus for loose items, any kind of issue, any kind of mechanical issue that might put a bus out of service, which there's a lot of, a lot of, there's a long list of what could put a bus out of service. So the buses are craft and ready and inspected, every single one. We also do CTE, or our CTE vehicles that are transporting students are also inspected. So we got to go through that. And it happens over a four-day period. Nothing goes out of the shop for four days in the summertime. We also do another inspection in the winter, which we've done well on in the past. And so we want to continue to do that. And I want to give my props to my team for doing that and doing a good job and being very meticulous on their kind of pre-inspection on a day view before Washington State Patrol shows up and keeping those buses running. And as far as everything else in this year, it's been, it's been, it's been very busy. Very, a lot of time readjusting routes and readjusting what kind of services we provide. Our daily business changes by the day. We're just impacted like every other department with people or staff that cannot be here for a particular reason as far as you know, medical or health or planned time off. So we are all in the same boat, every department, trying to make sure we cover everything to get, to keep everything moving. So anyway, thanks for your support.
Thank you Art for being here and congratulations to you and your team on yet another successful inspection. We're getting used to seeing those letters from your team for sure. And please extend our appreciation to your staff and the mechanics and especially the bus drivers who are kind of being very nimble and pivoting whenever they need to in order to make sure that our students are served and served well by our transportation department. So thank you so much.
Thank you Martha.
Thank you Art, appreciate you dropping in and sharing that information with us and congratulations again. The final item that I'd share this evening, members of the board, is a high-level view of a partnership in which we have engaged to pilot what is, it's a relationship with communities and schools. And it's a dropout prevention program. I've invited our, the Executive Director of Communities and Schools, Jessica Lara, to give us that overview. So Jessica, would you please present?
Yeah, good morning, good morning. That's the kind of day I'm having. Good afternoon, happy to join all of you. So Communities and Schools, Superintendent Green said, is traditionally the largest dropout prevention program in the nation. And I think if we can go to the next slide, it sort of shows you our footprint here in Washington State. So we are a national organization, but here in Washington State, we are a statewide affiliate organization with eleven independent affiliates and four of them are developing, well, eleven independent and four developing. I sit inside the developing affiliate here in Central Washington as Yakima School District is our first partnership here in Central Washington. So within that, one of the things that we do is we leverage opportunities that are community-based or non-academic supports that align to our mission. And our mission really is about surrounding students with a community of support and empowering them to stay in school. We do that by placing one of our staff members directly embedded into school buildings as a full-time position. Here in Yakima, we are called student and community advocates. And we are currently placed in five of your schools. Adams, Martin Luther King Jr., Barge Lincoln, Washington, Stanton are the five schools that we are in. And we are serving your district for the first time this year. Overall, our body of work really sees a couple of levels of service. Our first tier of service are whole school supports. These are supports that we do for any student, anytime. And we look at students as a whole child. So oftentimes when we're supporting a student, we're very often supporting the entire family. Anywhere from basic needs to housing stability to attendance, can we get you to and from school successfully if there's a barrier? Health, we often connect them into both dental, medical and mental health services. And a piece of the work that we noticed right away, when we started to look at Yakima School District and this partnership that Dr. Green and I sat down and looked at was that we directly aligned with your new strategic plan. And we really felt like this partnership made a lot of sense. So underneath the tier two of the Yakima School District strategic plan, it really focused on strong active relationships among families and schools and community. And it really aligned with the goals that we have with communities and schools, which is fueling personal potential. So every student can chart, take charge of their story. And we do that through advocating and brokering community-based organizations and services into the school. I often think about this as districts always try to do this, but it's the sheer capacity and the time that it takes to develop these partnerships and broker these services and building that can be a barrier to that. Our staff's role really is ensuring that we develop these partnerships and bring them to the most robust possible position possible for all of those tier one services. In addition to those tier one services, which are what I call whole school services, any student, anytime, we do case management services. Up to forty students in each building get intensive wraparound case management. Case management, when we do that, we do a comprehensive needs assessment of that entire student and family, establish some goals and then move forward on meeting and aligning those goals through different outcomes. And we measure those and can report those at any time. The very first thing that we do with any building when we enter, and I think is a supplemental piece of your packet, you're going to see some of this information, is a comprehensive needs assessment. So staff was hired in August, they entered buildings the very, I think a week before school started. And it started taking, collecting data around that comprehensive needs assessment. So the information you'll see is supplemental in your packet is what we have last, as of last Friday, found to be the greatest gaps in needs in buildings. We now will create a school support plan that will allow us to figure out which of those needs align with what district administrator, administration wants us to focus on. So we'll take time to focus on those needs, moving the needle on some of those progress reports. And you can see those in your supplemental information. Is that, I don't know, it's, it's sort of a very broad theory that we take down to practice and sometimes explaining it is harder than just seeing it in action. But questions or thoughts about that?
I would be happy to, to make a, a small addition. The way that this is manifest in the different buildings is through an individual who then becomes part of the staff and engages with students, a specific number around twenty to thirty students in a very intense case management type of approach that goes beyond just the student, but also to the family as well. Jessica, am I accurate in describing this pilot at four of our, four of our buildings?
Yeah, that's exactly right. We really do case manage those students to a depth that is often seen beyond what a typical school is able to do without that, without the piece of communities and schools. So we case manage the entire family. A good example of that is just this last week at Barge Lincoln, we had a father who received new employment. He went to our student, our community advocate and said, I don't have work clothes to go to work. We went out to our community partners, got him five outfits for the school, brought it back. We know that those outcomes for those families, if we can help the family remain stable, we will see students become more successful. So when we think about our case management services, we really think about what does that family holistically need? So that we can have that student enter the classroom ready to learn and at their very best. So it could be anything from housing stability to basic essentials to job and employment, to college and career readiness. Sometimes it's physical, mental, dental health that we, any of those. All of the staff that we hire are bilingual, bicultural. We want that as, as it's critical for our community in particular. So that they, when they go to do a home visit or they go to, to do a case management meet with a family, they can really meet them where they're at, judgment-free, really great conversation, strong relationships. Our model works based off the relationships. They're deep and they're strong. And very often we track with our students beyond high school and track them into their post-secondary.
In, in addition, I know Dr. Rodriguez, you had some affiliation with communities and schools. If you would like to interject, please do so. If not, we can go ahead and go to questions.
I would just share that Communities and Schools is a wonderful partner organization. They truly do work with school districts to meet the needs of our students and our families. So I'm really thrilled that we've been able to bring them on as a new partner this year.
Excellent. Any questions from board members?
I, I don't have a question. I just have appreciation to community and schools. It reminds me of a program I worked with in Seattle called Safer Cities, Street Seattle Team for Youth with Central Family Services, where we went into the schools and did the very same thing that community and schools are doing now. And it's, that's one of my things since I've been here. Been pushing for is that partnership. And thank you Jessica for, and community and schools for coming and meeting those families and those students where they, where they are and helping them keep up the great work. And I'm looking forward to see it in all the schools of Yakima School District. Thank you.
Any other questions or comments from board members? Thank you Jessica, it's nice to meet you even virtually.
Yes, thank you.
I appreciate the, the. I appreciate the, the kind of real life examples that you brought to us today and the ability that, um, that communities and schools has to build those partnerships, that, that, kind of that three-legged stool between homeschool and community. Um, many, I, I'm fairly confident that many more of our families, um, would benefit from your services than, than you have the capacity to support. But, um, every, it's like the starfish story, right? It, it makes a difference for this one. So thank you to you and your organization for, um, coming on board and partnering with us. And I look forward to hearing more great things from this partnership. So thank you so much for being here today.
Yes, thank you. Yeah, we look forward to, at the first end of grades, we will have reportables back to you off of those whole school support structures. So we can get all that data back to you and show all the services that we've provided and, um, really take a look at that data.
Excellent. Thank you for being here today. I don't know what time, what time zone you're in, so.
Well, I'm here in Yakima.
Oh, are you?
Yes, yeah, we have an office. Well, technically we have an office in my house currently. Everybody other than our site staff are still working from home as we sort of navigate COVID. But yes, based out of Yakima, live here locally and, um, yeah.
Excellent. Excellent. Well, thanks for joining us today. Trevor, do you have anything else in, for your report?
Uh, just again, want to thank Jessica Lara for being here. Art, even though he's already logged off, I want to thank Art for being here. And I'm excited about the partnership and the differentiation that we can engage in because of the partnership with communities in schools and look forward to seeing how the pilot plays out and whether we can expand that district-wide. And with that, I'm, uh, going, I will go ahead and conclude my superintendent update for today.
Thank you so much. Um, next on our agenda are the approvals. The first approval we have is permission to renew the contract with Fox Hire for the 2021-22 school year. Uh, Trevor, do you want me just to go directly to the appropriate staff member for these?
Uh, yes, please. Let's do that.
Okay. Dr. Darling?
Good evening, school board. We, um, are requesting the school board grant permission to contract with Fox Hire for the 2021-2022 school year for the amount of $300,000 to provide speech, language pathologists and occupational therapists to support students with special needs. This is due to our inability to find qualified SLPs and OTs in our area.
It's a perpetual problem, isn't it?
It is. If anybody wants to make a lot of money, start an SLP and an OT program.
Yeah, because they keep disappearing on us. Um, any questions from board members about this action item? If there are no questions, the board is being asked to grant permission to contract with Fox Hire for the 2021 to 2022 school year in the amount of $300,000 to provide speech, language, pathologists and occupational therapists, um, to support students with special needs.
So move.
Second.
Moved by Dawn, seconded by Norm. Is there any discussion? Barb, could you call the roll, please?
Reverend Davis, Jr.
Aye.
President Rice.
Aye.
Mr. Navarro, Jr.
Aye.
Mr. Walker.
Aye.
Motion passes four to zero.
Thank you so much. Um, next we have, uh, permission to renew the contract with AM, I can't see this, AMN Healthcare for the 2021 to 22 school year. Dr. Darling?
Thank you. And this is a very similar request. We requested the board directors grant permission to contract with AMN Healthcare the 2021-22 school year for the amount of $530,000 to provide speech, language pathologists to support students with special needs.
Are there any questions or comments from board members on this action item?
Yeah.
Okay. Seeing none, uh, the board is being asked to grant permission to contract with AMN Healthcare for the 2021 to 2022 school year in the amount of $530,000 to provide speech and language pathologists to support students with special needs.
So move.
Second.
It's been moved by Norm, uh, by Dawn and seconded by Norm. Uh, is there any discussion? Barb, could you call the roll, please?
Reverend Davis, Jr.
Aye.
President Rice.
Aye.
Mr. Navarro, Jr.
Aye.
Mr. Walker.
Aye.
Motion passes four to zero.
Thank you very much. Next action item is the permission to contract with the Steppingstones Group LLC for the 2021 to 22 school year in the amount of $320,000. Dr. Darling?
Thank you. So, uh, we requested the board directors grant permission to contract with the Steppingstones Group for the 2021-22 school year in the amount of $320,000 to provide classified staffing support for students with special needs. The Steppingstone Group is a, an organization that specializes in therapeutic and behavioral support.
Any questions or comments from board members on this action item?
I have one question. It's, it's kind of a technical question. It has to do with the training level of people providing that support. I've seen so much over the years, um, especially in one-on-one and special education and dealing with kids with behavioral issues, is, um, the hiring of parapros that don't have enough training to really be effective with those kids. And so I'm, I'm just curious of how you evaluate the effectiveness of the people that this organization is hiring and what their training level is to deal with kids with severe behavioral issues.
So that's actually one, one of the bonuses for using a company such as this is we vet their training program and their, uh, how stringent and rigorous they are in providing us with, with what they say they're providing with their, with their staff when they're with us. And so, um, we come, they, they come to us with this basic, with a, with a pretty strong foundation of training around these services, more so than if we were to hire a paraprofessional, uh, who's coming in cold. So that is a bonus for us. That being said, we still, we still don't assume that they have been trained and will perform the way they said. We still continue to monitor and evaluate and, uh, and if necessary, um, dismiss somebody based on if we're not seeing them perform the level we want them to be.
Okay. And this, the same part of that question would be who, who provides the supervision of that personnel?
So it would be the, the, the work director as, as if they were a paraprofessional. So if it was, if it was a paraprofessional that's pushing into a classroom, then there's the self-contained teacher or the research room, resource room teacher, or if it's, if it's for a speech, language pathologist support, then it'd be the SLPs. They would jump into these teletherapy sessions and do their evaluations.
Thank you.
Thank you, Norm. Other questions or comments from board members? Okay. Seeing none, uh, the board is being asked to grant permission to contract with the Steppingstones Group for the 2021 to 2022 school year in the amount of $320,000 to provide classified staffing support to students with special needs.
So move.
Second.
Moved by Norm, seconded by Dawn. Is there any discussion? Barb, could you call the roll, please?
Reverend Davis, Jr.
Aye.
President Rice.
Aye.
Mr. Navarro, Jr.
Aye.
Mr. Walker.
Aye.
Motion passes four to zero.
Thank you very much. And thank you, Dr. Darling, for your presentations. Uh, next item on our, uh, approval agenda is the permission to contract with Elite Cosmetology Barber and Spa Academy LLC in the amount of $353,116. Dr. Rodriguez?
Good afternoon. Thank you. I, we are seeking permission to contract with Elite Cosmetology Barber and Spa Academy in the amount of $353,116. This is really a renewal of one of our YPD tech programs.
Yes, we've seen this, um, request come to us a number of times over the years. Um, are there any questions or comments from board members? The only question I have, Jenny, and, and maybe I need, just need to kind of go out and find the answer myself. But do you know if for the students that participate in these programs through Elite, did the, does the student go to them or did they come to the skill center?
I don't have an answer to that, but I'd be happy to find out. For you, often with cosmetology, they go to the cosmetology school because of the setup, but I'd be happy to get back to you with that.
Okay. It was just, it was just a wondering on my part, so.
Dr. Darling has the information.
Yeah, so we go to them.
Okay. Now, do we provide transportation or is the student on the hook for the transportation to get there?
We provide transportation as needed.
Okay. Perfect. Thank you so much. All right. Um, any other questions from board members? Okay, the board is being asked to grant permission to contract with Elite Cosmetology Barber and Spa Academy LLC in the amount of $353,116.
So move.
Second.
Moved by Dawn, seconded by Norm. Is there any discussion? Barb, could you call the roll, please?
Reverend Davis, Jr.
Aye.
President Rice.
Aye.
Mr. Navarro, Jr.
Aye.
Mr. Walker.
Aye.
Motion passes four to zero.
Thank you so much. Uh, this moves us to item E on the agenda, items of board interest. Uh, the first item in this section is the first reading of policy 1450, Board Member Abstances. Um, this was a topic of discussion during, uh, I think during the retreat, um, in that, at one point we had this policy in, located within our policy, our, the 1,000 series. Um, but then at some point it disappeared. I don't know, I don't know how that happened. But I, I think it's, it's reasonable to want to bring that back. Um, and so I, I referred to other districts in kind of pulling together a first draft of this, which is attached within board docs. Um, the board had a chance to review it during the retreat and it is now, um, brought forward in the form of first reading. Um, the second reading would be, I don't know, next month, Barb? Is that reasonable?
Yeah, we can bring it back at the beginning of October.
Okay. All right. So, um, I don't know if board members have any reaction to this right away, or, um, if you want to just look, review it again and provide your thoughts, and any adjustments to the policy, we can, we can discuss that at another one of our Monday board meetings if, if there's interest in doing that. Okay. Seeing, seeing no one come forward, we will move this, um, into the first reading process and have it come forward for second reading in October. Okay. Uh, next item on the agenda is, um, a revisit of our in-person meeting status. You may have seen that, uh, Yakima City Council has moved their meetings to virtual, um, due to the, uh, rise in the case counts locally. And I'm wondering, um, how, how board members feel about our decision that we made, what, two weeks ago, three weeks ago, um, to continue to have our Monday meetings in, in, in virtual mode, but our business meetings in person. Uh, those would be continued at the Eisenhower Auditorium. Thoughts from board members?
Well, since nobody gonna say anything, I guess I will. I think we should, we can still continue with our in-person, with business meeting.
Okay.
On its Tuesdays.
I'm.
Cause we so, we so distance apart, so.
I, I'm okay with, I'm okay with that too. I would say if the, if we have a, the spike in COVID gets worse and worse and worse, I would be more comfortable going back to a, just a virtual, virtual meeting. And the, you know, one of the reasons to have the public meeting was to give audience opportunity to participate more directly, but we're not really getting much audience at those meetings anyway. We're getting five to 10 people at most. So I'm not so sure that when you, when you think of all the work that the Eisenhower staff has to do to put that together once a month and, and do that, it might be simpler just to go back to a virtual meeting until we truly get out of the COVID mess. But I'm comfortable either way. I can live with it either way.
Raymond, your thoughts?
Yes, I, I agree with Norm. Comfortable with the current, uh, schedule. And if things get kind of haywire on us, then we can, we can look at returning to fully remote.
Well, I did notice that, um, the city council in moving to remote also instituted, I don't, three, four, five different ways that the public can participate in public comment, um, at these meetings, even though they are virtual. When we were virtual last spring, well, yeah, from whenever we went virtual until sometime in the summer, um, the, we were in emergency stat, under the emergency status order and we're not required to have public comment at our meetings. Um, even though state law does not require us to provide an opportunity for public comment at school board meetings, we do, uh, and we have in the past. Um, but I'm wondering if, I mean, it, the, the spike in our community of, uh, cases and hospitalizations has me quite concerned. And in addition to, as Norm pointed out, the amount of staff time that is involved in setting up and tearing down the auditorium, which is a pretty large facility to begin with, um, does give me some pause, especially since staff is somewhat stretched, um, at this point in time. Um, I would be more in, in favor myself of just moving to virtual format until the, um, case count and hospitalizations and such in this community are much lower than they are right now. It gives me great pause that we've got a hospital that is very near to crisis triage than where we were even during the summer. Um, and it would, it would be terrible if an event that, that- And it would, it would be terrible if an event that, that we held contributed to that at all.
I move that we go virtually for both, both Monday and business meetings.
Yeah, Martha, you have a good argument. I think that, and I agree with Reverend Davis, your argument has convinced me that it does take a lot of effort, a lot of resources for staff to set up a safe environment for us. So, if we could not have to do that or not have our staff commit to do that, having to do that every, every time we meet, I think I agree with you, so.
So, is that a second?
I guess it is. I didn't know we were voting, but okay.
Well, I mean, you know.
We had, we had a motion, so.
Yeah.
Okay. So, it's been moved and seconded that the board meetings convert back to virtual mode until such time as it's safe for us to come back into, into in-person meetings. Is there any further discussion on this? Okay. I don't know how many of you have had a chance to look at the city council's website, and I can't pull it up right now, on their public comment parameters. What I can recall from having read through them. People are, they are allowing people to kind of join the Zoom meeting for the purpose of, if they have public comment, and they, they have to kind of sign up online by 3:00 that afternoon, well, the afternoon of the meeting. So that we have, so that we know who is interested and what their topic is, and I think they probably can submit their, their testimony as well as speak to it. I don't know how the board would like to adjust our public comment. Do you want to have a discussion about that now or would you rather just have some kind of, of framework to react to, keeping in mind that our next business meeting is next Tuesday, and I don't think we have a meeting on Monday?
Martha, I would say because the online meetings, as we know, can take a long, a long time, right? Especially with the translation that anybody who has any public comments can send those to the superintendent or the president via email or whatever, and then we can process those during the meeting. That'd be, might, might be a lot quicker.
The, just so that, a reminder to the board is that the translation is now simultaneous. We don't have to speak and then pause and then speak and then pause. There's an organization that's helping us out with that, and they're doing simultaneous translation or interpretation for those who wish to take part in that.
I, I like the idea of having a public comment in by 3:30 PM before that Tuesday of the board meeting. And that way, we can move, move forward.
Okay. Do you want to continue to have two comment periods? I know city council has, I don't know that I recall accurately what their process is for public comment, but.
They have two as well.
Yeah. So, in this new format where they've gone virtual, they're only allowing public comment verbally to be for agenda items. And then they, they have opportunities for folks to provide things, comment by email or by letter form, or I think maybe on a recorded line, I'm not sure. So, they have several options for folks, depending on what kind of access individuals have and what, how they feel that they can be most effective. So, do we still want to continue with the two public comment periods? One for the agenda items and one for everything else?
I like that procedure. And also still, I think, why do we have a three-minute time limit for comments? I'd like to retain that as well.
Okay. So, you, you're in favor of sticking with the two comment periods versus just
Yes.
one for agenda items?
Right.
Okay. Raymond?
That's fine.
Okay. All right. So, if there's no objection, I'll work with Barb to get information up on the website for moving us to virtual, starting with next Tuesday's business meeting and providing options for folks on how they can provide comment to the board.
Okay. Did we actually vote on that motion yet? Is the motion still on the floor?
The motion is still on the floor.
Yeah, we're just having discussion. Okay, so we haven't, we need to complete that process.
Correct.
Yeah.
Is there any further discussion? Okay, Barb, could you call the roll, please?
Yes, Reverend Davis, Jr.
Aye.
President Rice?
Aye.
Mr. Navarro, Jr.
Aye.
Mr. Walker?
Aye.
Motion passes four.
Okay, thank you all. Next item are changes to upcoming WASDA events. Those of you who've been checking the WASDA website or your email have probably seen that General Assembly is not only changed dates, as, as I mentioned earlier, but also is going from in-person to virtual. Our Fall Regional Meeting has moved from in-person to hybrid to possibly virtual. What the WASDA staff is doing is that a week before the regional meeting, they reach out to the hosting district to see if they want to do the hybrid and have people actually in their facilities, or if they would prefer just that the, to forego that and have the meeting be virtual, completely virtual. There will not be, even if they are, even if they stay hybrid, there will be no food service provided, so it would be a six to eight-ish meeting. Those who are, those who are in, in virtual mode will have as much of an opportunity for input and reaction as those who are in-person. My sense is that of those regional meetings that have occurred so far, that nearly all of them have been virtual, have been moved to virtual mode. And there was a $25 fee when we were all going to be in-person. That fee is now waived, so that Fall Regional Meeting is now free. So, ours is scheduled for the 30th. At this point, it's still tentative for Grandview High School. And if you had been registered for the Fall Regional Meeting, you have now, and you, you had that prior to them making this change, you have been unregistered, and WASDA is encouraging you to go onto the WASDA website, re-register, and indicate whether you want to be in virtual or hybrid form. And they'll also take that into consideration in the, making the decision about what format the meeting will be in. I have re-registered for virtual because as much as I like the people in DA8, I don't know that I want to be in a cafeteria with 40 or 50 of them in close proximity. So, if you had registered for the Fall Regional Conference, maybe you could work with Barb to check your current registration status. And the WASDA Annual Conference has now gone hybrid. They have a cap of 800 in-person. That, I don't know if that will change between now and then, but my understanding is that they have, they have reached or are near reaching that cap, that in-person cap. And anybody wishing to participate in person, once that cap is reached, they'll be put on a waiting list. So, if you haven't already done so, if, I think we were all at one point, maybe except for Raymond, registered for in-person, please check with Barb and make sure that if you want to be, if you want to participate virtually, then she can change your registration and eliminate the room cost at the hotel. As a reminder, it's in Bellevue this year on the weekend before Thanksgiving. I think 16, 17, 18, or 17, 18, 19, something like that. Any questions about those? Okay. Any other items of board interest from board members?
Martha, I do have one, and I'm not, I just want to bring it up, and it's not a item for discussion, and maybe we could have it, but, because I know we've had discussions on districting of the board. So, we heard last week that the Yakima County Commission was involved in a lawsuit by One America, right? And now they are being, moving to the single-member districts so, so that the commission does indeed reflect the community. And so, I, I think that, I believe that the Yakima School Board here in Yakima is probably the last, the last non-governing board that is, is still at large, you know? So, I don't know, just something to think about. I know the board has been pretty good at reflecting here the last few years, reflecting the community, so. But while that is a good thing, it's done through appointments and not through elections. So, it's just something to think about. We know that, again, that the Yakima County Commissioners are making those changes. So, we, that might be on the horizon for, for the Yakima School Board as well. So, just, just some thoughts here, just throwing that out there.
I appreciate you bringing that up, Raymond. Part of the problem with, for instance, city council and now county commissioners, is that people were elected in the primary in their districts. And then when it came time to the general, for the general election, they were elected at large in the county. So, that, that was part of the problem.
Yes.
And I would say that our board is probably one of the most diverse boards and most represented, representative of our community in, in the state. And that has been the case for probably the last 10 years. And, and it's not necessarily something that we, that we have on our agenda for today, but if you, if there are three board members who wish to bring that forward, we can certainly schedule it for a future agenda item. So, just, just food for thought. Thank you for bringing that to our attention, Raymond.
Sure.
Is there anything else for items of board interest from board members? Trevor, do you have anything else for us?
Not at this time. Thank you.
Okay. Do we have a need for executive session?
We do not.
All right. Anything for the good of the order before we adjourn? All right. Thank you all very much. I appreciate you all being here this evening, well, late afternoon. The sun's still out, at least for a couple more weeks. Raymond, it's good to see you. Thank you for joining us, and we will see you all again next Tuesday at the business meeting in virtual format.
Okay. Good night, all.
Okay. Thank you. Have a good week, everyone.